I'm good to go?
One moment.
Okay.
You may begin the meeting, Mr. Bonham.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everybody.
Calling now, being recorded.
The Transportation Committee meeting Friday, June 19th, 2020. I'm Councilman Mike Bonham, the Chair of the Committee. I am joined today by my colleague Paul Coretts of the Fifth District. Today, the 19th of June, is Juneteenth. And I want to acknowledge that and I want to wish a happy Juneteenth to everybody. And I also thought it would be appropriate to start with a few words apropos of that. Earlier in the month, NACTO issued a statement on everything that has been happening in this country and the new awakening and realization about systemic racism that has happened in the wake of George Floyd's murder, his execution. And I just wanted to read parts of it. You can find it on Streetsblog L.A. or Streetsblog USA if you'd like to see the whole thing. But it's worth noting as we start a meeting about Transportation Committee on Juneteenth. The NACTO statement notes that the harassment and injustice that people of color, particularly black people, experience at the hands of law enforcement on transit and in streets and in public spaces is unacceptable and wrong. Racism, police violence, and structural inequity are transportation problems. And as transportation planners, engineers, policy and decision makers, we cannot turn a blind eye. Our job is to make streets and public spaces safe for everyone. But from historic policies like redlining to modern ones like criminalization of fare evasion, many transportation and land use decisions have amplified and fortified racial inequities. If we ignore historical and current day racism and pretend that the spaces we create are neutral, we abdicate our responsibility to provide safe mobility for everyone. And we become complicit in perpetuating the racist underpinnings of our systems and structures. Every day, people in transportation agencies at every level of government are faced with decisions that mean the difference between sustained progress or continuation of violent oppression. Despite good intentions, many of us, particularly those of us who are white, have unintentionally perpetuated the racist structures that make our cities and regions inequitable. We all hold power. It is past time for each of us to use that power to stamp out racism and injustice. As we work together on recovery from the disparate impacts of COVID-19 and grapple with our path forward in light of the past week's violence in our streets, we must recognize that our efforts will be incomplete and insufficient without equal effort to dismantle racist systems. We must ensure that our work creates a more just future where freedom of mobility ranks true for all. I want to thank NACTO for issuing that statement. And I think it's an important one to note and keep in mind at this committee meeting and as we make any and all transportation or mobility decisions going forward. So with that, we will get to the agenda. There are a number of items I was going to recommend for consent approval, but I suspect we have some public comment. So why don't we start with public comment?
Mr. Bonham?
Yes.
Would you like to read the introductory paragraph from the agenda instructing the public how to participate in the meeting, please?
Oh, thank you for the reminder, Mr. White. Public comment instruction. Members of the public who would like to offer public comment on the items listed on the agenda should call 669-254-5252. That's 669-254-5252. Then you should use meeting ID number 161-829-4030, pound. Again, that's 161-829-4030, and then pound. And then you press pound again when prompted for participant ID.
And Mr. Bonham, before you begin, I'll need to take the role. Councilmember Bonham.
I am here.
Councilmember Martinez. She is absent, and Councilmember Coretts.
Present.
Two members present. Mr. Bonham, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Do we have public comment speakers today?
We do. We have six public commentators so far in the queue. If you'd like, I can begin with those.
Yes, please go ahead, Mr. Bruins.
Okay. The first, so callers, please identify yourself first and then say which items you'd like to speak on. If you are speaking on one item, you will get one minute. If you're speaking on more than one item, you will get two minutes. The first caller will be phone number ending in 7660. Your line is live now. Please identify yourself.
My name is Leon Slomovic, President of Taxi Workers Association of Los Angeles. I want to speak on, I want to make a general public comment, and I want to speak on item number 13.
Okay, you'll have two minutes. Ready, ready to begin? Go ahead.
Should I begin now?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yeah.
So in no particular order. On general public comment, no reasonable explanation exists today regarding exclusion of taxi cabs from the taxi stands inside LAX. It's not a parking issue. It's not a neighborhood issue. It's not a traffic issue. This, Mr. Bonham, you're Chair of the Committee, and Mr. Coretts, you've advanced a motion to reinstate taxi cabs. I ask that this issue be agendized and discussed in the committee. The other issue I wanted to bring up was there's now a meal delivery program set up for taxi cabs, but half of the companies are essentially excluded for no particular reason. This is discriminatory policy that should not be allowed to go on under the auspices of LEDOT and the city. As regards to the extension number item of the franchise, item number 13, you are extending it for four months. We asked that it be extended for one year, for one year until next July because the issue has been taken out of Taxi Cab Commission. The drivers have not had any input. This will be an exploitive, new policies that will force drivers to work at below minimum wage. There's been no examination of the flaws in AB1069s regarding antitrust issues. This needs to be addressed by the city attorney and issue legal guidance. Individual drivers are essentially individual business entities that cannot coordinate prices, and neither can the companies dictate what they're supposed to charge. Open market system that this plan is proposing is model on Uber's model, which has been debunked and discredited in every way in regards to exploiting drivers and the safety for the passengers. This needs to be, to have a thorough discussion that includes drivers and their opinions. And there needs to be more time for the economy to get back to normal where a discussion of how we should be going forward should be undertaken. It needs to be equitable.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time has expired. Okay. The next speaker is last four digits, 7080. Your line is unmuted. Please identify yourself and which items you'd like to speak on.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, my name's Lorenzo. I'm a constituent of Council Martinez, and I have just a general public comment as well as comment on item 10. Council item 190885.
Okay, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
All right. I just wanted to implore folks here on this Transportation Commission to push LEDOT to genuinely prioritize people-centered recovery projects, especially through public transportation and other ways of getting around L.A. other than the car. I know the, I know the ADAPT program can be used in that way. It kind of has been used that way with respect to at least Seventh Street in downtown L.A. But I know there's been some grumblings about at least where paratransit vehicles can drop off their riders. You know, they've been at least forced to use the bike lanes at some point. That's what I've heard. So I hope that can be rectified. And with the fast-tracking of these projects, which is a good thing, especially through bus lanes and all that stuff, I hope that we, the community engagement isn't thrown out the wayside. It's still important to reach out to people, not use the pandemic as an excuse to, you know, carte blanche, change things. Even if you could argue that this is arguably better. It's not like we're putting a freeway through a neighborhood, right? But still, engagement, especially for communities of color, disabled, communities with a high amount of foster disabilities, senior communities, they still need to be reached out to and engaged in these processes. And with respect to item number 10, I hope LEDOT can definitely properly implement projects that will, via Next Bus, including Fifth and Sixth Street bus lanes in downtown and potentially the ones on Grand and Olive. And also...
Thank you. Your time has expired.
All right.
Thank you very much for your comment. Okay, the next speaker, the last four digits of your phone number are 6913. Your line is unmuted. Please identify yourself and which items you'd like to speak on.
Yes, my name is, it's item number, general comment and item number 13. My name is John Obagdian, and I'm General Manager for City of Los Angeles in the taxi cab, LACD cap, operating as a franchisee in City of Los Angeles. We have been working with City of Los Angeles Department of Transportation on potentially completely changing the permitting system in the City of Los Angeles for taxis as the franchises are expiring. For the past year, we've provided input and we've provided, participated in meetings. However, at this, the taxi industry that is navigating a new era as the City of Los Angeles is experiencing with COVID-19, it's a very difficult situation not to participate in discussions that is going to be impacting us in terms of permit fees, new process of permitting taxis. As it relates to especially taxi industry that LEDOT has provided some form of fees to the city's administrative offices, and they have not received any input from the taxi industry. And this is a very serious issue for us because we need to know, as we have provided input in the past, how the new permitting system and the fees are going to impact us. Therefore, we're asking for a one-year extension because our experience is a four-month extension. With the type of revamping of the entire permit system and the fees, it's not going to happen in four months without having adequate input from the industry, discussions, and collaboration. We're proud that we have been working with the mayor's office for the senior food delivery program, and that was because we worked very closely together and we were able to implement such a thing. Now, we're very surprised that we are listening or hearing about this extension without proper impact as to the fees that will be impacting us and the type of permitting system that will be implemented. So we're requesting a one-year extension. I appreciate that.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, the next speaker, last four digits, 7637. Your line is unmuted. Please identify yourself and which items you'd like to speak on.
Thank you very much. My name is Shemelis Tadde Samiha. I am from United Independent Cap Company and also a Taxi Worker Association member. I'm speaking on two items on the public forum and also on item number 13. On item number...
Okay.
I'm sorry, item number 13.
Okay.
In public forum, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I support the extension, not only for four months, at least for one year, so that if the pandemic problem could be somehow solved or at least we will know what is going on. What is planned with the vehicle for higher new system that's untested, and it's a kind of a failure system. So please extend the franchise for one more year. And also, the LAX issue is very important for drivers. Would you please, that you gentlemen are familiar with the situation? You have put a motion, and it is in your committee. Please allow the taxi cab to pick up at the curb side. It's very important for drivers. And also, we know some companies have put deliveries from the city. Some other companies are not offered, although they have applied. Just one, United has, and I know Independent also has. It should not be discriminated from company to company. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker, last four digits of your phone number, 1997. You are unmuted. Please identify yourself and which items you'd like to speak on. Caller with the last four digits, 1997, if you wish to speak at this time. Okay, well, we will go on to last four digits, 7660. Please identify yourself and which items you'd like to speak on. Caller with the last four digits, 76... Yes.
Yeah, I already spoke. I just wanted to listen to the, to the meeting.
Oh, okay. Last four digits, 4617. You're unmuted. Please identify yourself and which items you'd like to speak on.
Yes, this is Gary Vogon. I'd like to speak on item number 13, and also I have a few points to make on public comments. I am the secretary... Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I'm also the Secretary of the Taxi Workers Association of Los Angeles, and I am a driver for Yellow Cab Company. And I just want to support the previous speakers in their call for an extension of the franchise for another year. Gentlemen, you know the pandemic is not going away. It is in fact intensifying. California is one of the 20 states where the number of COVID-19 cases is increasing. Our business four months from now, I don't think is going to be improving. And we need a year's extension. I don't think there's been enough discussion amongst the drivers and input to, for us to properly participate and give our input on this issue. And it involves only the survival of our industry. So four months is not enough. We support that. But it needs to be at least a year. On another item, another topic discussion, I would also like to talk about the general food deliveries and senior food deliveries. I understand that right now, this program is limited to only a handful of companies, specifically Yellow Cab, City Cab, and, I forget, and Bell Cab. Certain companies have been left out of this program that is currently in operation, United Independent and ITOA. We think in the interest of fairness that these companies need to be included as well. We are all in the same boat. Driver's survival is at stake right now. As you know, our business is a fraction of what it is. Only a fraction of the drivers are working right now. And I think in the interest of fairness, this program should not be limited just, you know, these three companies. There are other companies also involved, but they have ceased operation. That's how dire the situation is. The L.A. Checker Cab, I know Beverly Hills Cab, and others are not currently operating. The industry is collapsing, and we need to do our best to keep the drivers who are working with some business to keep operating.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you very much.
Your time has expired. Thank you. Okay, last four digits, 1088. Your line is open. Please identify yourself and which items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, this is Carter Rubin from NRDC. I'd like to speak on the Next Gen Report.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thanks. Just calling in to express my support for the work of the Next Gen Bus Speed Engineering Working Group. We're really excited to see the projects moving forward expediently on Fifth and Sixth Street and stand ready to be a positive voice in support for Olive and Grand, as well as helping, you know, wanting to see the agency build out a whole work program around speeding up buses throughout the region. So strongly support this and look forward to this and more in the future.
Okay, thank you. Last, let's see. Last one, or sorry, there's two more. Last four digits, 6913. Your line is open. Please identify yourself and which items you'd like to speak on. Last four, 6913. Okay. And then last four, 3932. Your line is open. Please identify yourself and which items you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, good afternoon. My name is Mohamed Porastivar. I'm the President of United Independent Taxi. Also, I'm supporting Mr. Baghdadiyan and Shemelis, which is to speak about one-year extension. As you are aware, the coronavirus damage was very extensive. It's very difficult to recover, you know, this short period of time. Please, at least one-year extension. Also, food delivery, what the other gentleman spoke about this issue. I might agree with him. UITD, United Independent Taxi, never closed, even we had one loss. But we serve the community. Please help us to sustain business. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, one final opportunity for last four digits, 6913. Your line is open. If you'd like to speak, please identify yourself. Okay, then that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Bruins. Much appreciated. So public comments for this meeting is now closed. Mr. Coretts, I was going to recommend items three through nine and 15 for consent approval, while noting that there are corrected reports on CD4 and CD15.
You mean item number four and 15, or four and five, not?
Four and five, yes. Thank you very much. So consent would be items three through nine and 15 with four and five amended.
Looks fine to me.
All right, so do we need a vote on that, Mr. White?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Bonham.
Aye.
Martinez. And Coretts.
Aye.
Two ayes. The motion to approve those reports passes.
Okay, that will bring us to item number one.
Item number one is the DOT General Manager to present a verbal report relative to the department's ongoing projects and programs and recognition of the department's employees for outstanding service. Great.
All right. Good afternoon, Ms. Alves.
Good afternoon, Councilmember. It's been a while since we've hung out together at Transportation Committee. And I appreciate very much your recognition of today as Juneteenth, a really important day for all of us at LEDOT and also a really important week for all of us at LEDOT given the series of pretty consequential Supreme Court rulings that have come down that relate directly to the security and certainty of many folks who work for LEDOT and with LEDOT. And in that spirit, I'm very excited to continue to celebrate and elevate all of the people, the great folks we have here in the department. And so as is our custom, we're going to do some employee recognition. And I believe that we have both of them on the call, and I think you can see both of them have their video open. And so maybe we can all give them either a round of applause or jazz hands as I call them out. First, I'm going to recognize Karen Aravalo. Management Assistant Karen Aravalo began her career with the Department of Transportation in February 2019. She is currently assigned to the Parking Enforcement Communication Center. During her short time with the department, she's been instrumental in implementing several changes to streamline the effectiveness of the dispatch center. Karen has a clear commitment to innovation and continually evolves methods by implementing and embracing new technology. She was instrumental to the successful implementation of a new computer-aided dispatch technology and developed a comprehensive inventory system and deployment plan for traffic officer handheld radios. Karen produces quality work with minimal oversight. Her desire to continually learn and improve is unique quality, and her dedication is commendable and inspirational. Thank you, Karen, for everything you do for LEDOT. Yes, amen to that. Next, I want to recognize somebody else whose friendly face I haven't seen in a really long time, and I'm delighted to see him, Captain Freddie Nuneo. Captain Nuneo manages the largest division in the entire department, which deploys approximately 160 traffic officers. He's managed with staffing shortages during the pandemic of approximately 50 to 55% fewer people. Captain Nuneo has been creative with scheduling and duties with all his staff and has done so with integrity and inclusiveness of all levels of staff with their input and recommendations. The pride in his staff, the pride his staff has in their daily duties is a direct response to his leadership and the trust that they have that he will do the right thing for them and for the city. Captain Nuneo oversees critical services, including testing sites, mobile testing sites, early unified grab-and-go, marches, protests, numerous traffic control duties, in addition to parking enforcement services. Many of these services are requested services with limited notification, and Captain Nuneo always delivers. He is a hands-on manager who goes the extra mile for his staff, and during the pandemic, he can be found personally sanitizing the building and equipment to ensure his employees are safe. His accurate reports and timely responses to staff, stakeholders, and other agencies and to the Emergency Operations Center have been critical in our department's emergency response. Captain Nuneo's integrity is an asset to his staff and the department as he fulfills a duty of commitment and adaptability during these times, past, present, and future. Job well done. Thank you, Freddie, so much for everything you do. And that concludes my report.
Awesome, thank you. Well, congratulations to all those who got the very well-deserved recognition. We hope you'll have an opportunity to be welcomed into committee in person at some point for a larger round of applause. But in the meantime, please accept our gratitude and our appreciation. Mr. Coretts, you have any questions for the General Manager?
No, I would just agree. It's great that you brought forward two people that have done some very significant things for the department. I feel guilty that you could hear three hands clapping when otherwise you would have had a room full of people. But that doesn't mean that your recognition is any less sincere for all the great work that you both keep doing. So we appreciate it and recognize it.
I feel like Councilmember jazz hands are worth the price of admissions, and I appreciate Councilmember Coretts that you went there, very much so.
I cannot see it. Okay. Uh, okay, uh, thank you, uh, very much. That, uh, concludes item number one. Uh, next up is item number two.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Mr. John Jones III to the Board of Transportation Commissioners for the term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Mr. Tafari Bain.
All right, is, uh, Mr. Jones with us?
He is on the, he is, John, are you there?
Uh, why don't we-
I believe I see him in the room, but he's muted. Um, he's listed as Eastside Riders Bike Club.
Let's see if I can-
Uh, he, he muted himself, so I'm not able to unmute him. Oh, there you go.
How are you doing now?
Hey, John.
Yep, oh, how's everyone doing?
Good, how are you? Congratulations. Would you like to tell us, uh, uh, a little bit about, uh, uh, your background and why you're interested, uh, in serving?
Uh, uh, my name is John Jones III. I am, uh, Watts, uh, lifelong resident, uh, serves the community of, uh, of, of Watts, um, every day. Um, with my organization, Eastside Riders Bike Club, um, who's, who's been on the front lines trying to make Watts more, um, ridable and, uh, walkable community. Um, I've served in, in, on the councilman's, uh, Busqueanos, uh, for five and a half, uh, years prior to, uh, to leaving a year ago to focus on my organization. Um, I am focused on making, uh, the city of, uh, 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 ridable, walkable, um, and, and making sure that people have the rights to, um, to see the, the community in a different light. Um, I, I, I'm just honored to, to, to be, uh, recommended for this position, um, because I know that there's a lot to be done in the community. Um, seeing that, seeing where I, I come from, um, there's a lot has, has, has been done and I know throughout the city, we can, we can make some changes to do more.
Uh, thank you. Well, I want to, uh, express my gratitude to you for your willingness to serve. Uh, I have, uh, known and seen, uh, John at work, uh, for years, uh, both from a distance, uh, from his community advocacy and then up closer when he was working for Mr. Busqueino. Uh, you are a, uh, a, a tremendous advocate for all the right stuff. Uh, you're a phenomenal professional. You, um, you were a, a great asset to the city when we had you in our employ. Uh, you'll be an even greater asset, uh, working as a volunteer, uh, and, uh, I couldn't be more enthusiastic about this appointment and, uh, will certainly be recommending with the most enthusiastic endorsement I can. Um, Mr. Kretz, anything you'd like to add?
I, I, I would, uh, uh, echo those remarks. We appreciate your service, uh, uh, as staffer for the city and your willingness to serve in this capacity. I, I guess, uh, I should ask you to say a few words about how you think, uh, uh, we can make this city more bicycle friendly. Uh, especially, uh, I'm here for two and a half years. How can I be helpful in that, uh, regard?
Well, um, one, one of, one of my things that I feel that we need to do is, um, well, two, is, um, educate drivers, um, um, on, on cycling. Um, so I think a lot of drivers should come out of their cars and take, um, uh, bicycle education classes. Um, so then they can understand, most, most cyclists have, has driven a car before and they understand the opposite side of driving. But the, so, most drivers have, have not, um, taken a bike, uh, uh, education because are, have ridden, ridden a bike. A lot of folks that I deal with in the, in the community, we have them take the bicycle safety class and then they become better drivers because they look out for cyclists, um, when they are, um, um, driving down the street. So I think a lot of drivers to come out and then, um, a lot of the, we just need more education in the community to the cyclists, um, on what they need to be doing when they're riding their bikes, um, down the street and what to look out for and to have helmets and lights. And just do more work with, with kids, um, through the, through the Safe Raster School Program, uh, teaching them, uh, bicycle education. So then, um, through the future of their life, they have those skills, um, set, set with themselves.
And, and, and I, I would agree with you and, uh, perhaps if we had more widespread, uh, bicycle education, we'd see less of sort of anti-bicycle road rage that we occasionally see. I, I, I'm an infrequent cyclist and it's probably for fear of sharing streets with, with vehicles. And, uh, I, I've had a couple instances where cars have come intentionally very close, uh, including, uh, you know, literally nipping my shirt without actually hitting my elbow, but that would be like an inch miss. Uh, and, and we certainly heard worse, so ways to educate and deal with, with drivers in that circumstance be, would be helpful and might be, uh, a good place to focus on.
Yep.
Okay.
Wouldn't agree more.
Uh, thanks, John. Uh, so, uh, I believe it will be, uh, a unanimous approval. Um, uh, I'm, I'm in agreement here. Um-
Let's take a vote, Mr. Bonham. So there'll be, uh, uh, Mr. Bonham.
Aye.
Martinez is absent and Mr. Kretz.
Enthusiastically aye.
The matter passes. Thank you, Councilmembers.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you, and, uh, do we know when he's, uh, he's scheduled for council?
I'll work with your office and with Mr. Jones at a council day. It'll probably be the week before the recess.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, that brings us to item number ten.
Item number ten is an LEDOT report relative to the Next Gen Bus Speed Engineering Working Group and its designation of priority transit corridors for infrastructure improvement and conducting community engagement.
Thank you, and I believe, uh, Mr. Mitchell is presenting for us today.
Yes, good afternoon, Councilmembers. Hey, Dan Mitchell. I'm the Assistant General Manager of LEDOT for Project Delivery Operations and I am here this afternoon to provide you an update on the Next Gen Bus Speed Engineering Working Group, uh, a partnership between LEDOT and LA Metro. The last update I provided you, uh, last year, the Engineering Working Group has, um, made significant progress and I'd like to highlight, uh, some of the work that we've been doing and, and some of the future recommendations. Uh, first is, um, an effort to, to make the Flower Street Bus Lane permanent. That Flower Street Bus Lane was installed from Seventh, uh, South to Adams, uh, during the, um, the rewapping of, of the Blue Line traffic, now the A Line, uh, through that construction. Uh, and, uh, the, the working group evaluated, uh, how that, um, bus lane had been working and, and found some pretty, uh, significant improvements. So, uh, for, uh, with respect to all of the people traveling on Flower Street, uh, just the single bus only lane, uh, it served eighty-six percent of the total people traveling through the corridor. Uh, and it added bus travel speeds, uh, improvements of up to thirty percent. Meanwhile, with, um, general traffic impacts being relatively minor, uh, just having a two mile an hour impact on a thirty-five hour street. So, the bus working group is, um, working toward, uh, moving, uh, moving toward work, working toward making that Flower Street Bus Lane, uh, a permanent one, a permanent part of the network in downtown Los Angeles.
You get jazz hands, Kretz.
Okay, uh, building on that, uh, we turned our attention towards the split of Fifth Street and Sixth Street that are downtown Los Angeles. Uh, this, this area is between Flower on the west and Central on the east. Uh, those, the combination of, uh, those two streets carry a significant amount of bus traffic coming from destinations, uh, throughout, uh, Los Angeles and, uh, serve over eighty buses an hour. Uh, this, the proposed bus lanes on, on these streets would operate between seven AM and seven PM and serve, um, a bus on the average of every forty-five seconds. Due to the Streets L.A. Adapt Program accelerated, accelerated effort to resurface streets throughout the city, uh, the, uh, the working group had the opportunity to advance the installation of these bus lanes, uh, this month. So the, the installation is, uh, or the, this thing is in progress as we speak and we anticipate, uh, installation of these bus lanes in the coming weeks. Accompanied with that effort has been, uh, a robust community outreach process led by LA Metro's Community Relations and supported by Council District fourteen, uh, the Mayor's Office and LEDOT. Uh, so we have, um, been doing a tremendous amount of outreach considering the disparate home environment that we exist in at this time. Uh, building on that, the working group also identified, oh, I'm sorry, as part of the Fifth and Sixth Street Bus Lane, uh, the department is also implementing bike lanes on Fifth and Sixth Street, uh, between Spring and Central. So those bike lanes will be on the left side of the street with the bus lane operating on the right side of the street. Due to the frequency of buses, those, uh, people traveling by those two modes are in separate lanes. The next update I want to provide was on Aliso Street. Uh, the Aliso Street is a s- short segment that connects the existing bus lane on Spring Street, traveling by City Hall, uh, and, uh, connects that, uh, bus lane over to Alameda, where the Silver Line makes a connection onto the, uh, express lanes, uh, out to El Monte. Another segment that the working group identified and, um, and will be looking forward to, uh, implementation in the future. And, uh, the final stretch in downtown is a couple of Olive Street and Grand Street. That is Olive northbound from Pico up to First and Grand Street from Fifth down to Pico. Uh, in this case, we have existing bike lanes on these streets. All, uh, Streets L.A. Adapt Program is providing an opportunity to advance this work. In, uh, during this time, until community outreach can be conducted, LEDOT is preparing for the implementation of future bike lanes by relocating, or bus lanes, by relocating the existing bike lanes on these one-way streets to the left side. And, uh, finally, uh, then the working group in the future will be looking toward, uh, implementing additional improvements uh, in other areas of Los Angeles. Uh, oh, I forgot to mention that on Fifth Street, we're also including a Q jumper at Fifth and Flower, which will allow the buses an easier time to advance green and be able to cross safely from the right side all the way across all those lanes to the left side in order to continue on west of the one-ten freeway. Uh, looking forward, uh, the working group is addressing, uh, Transit Priority System that currently is only afforded to the Rapid Buses, the red buses you see, and we're working for expanding that to the entire fleet of buses traveling on the Tier One corridors, or, uh, Transit Priority corridors. And, uh, finally, Metro is working on expanding, uh, to boarding. So all of these efforts, uh, together are working toward that goal of improving bus speed improvements significantly, uh, through Los Angeles. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have it.
Great, thank you. Uh, Mr. Kretz, do you have any questions?
Yeah, um, how many such projects have already been implemented and how successful have they been?
Uh, at this time, Councilmember, uh, the, the only bus lanes, the only new bus lanes that have been, uh, implemented were the Flower Street ones. Uh, but we are in the process in the coming weeks, uh, implementing the Fifth Street and Sixth Street Bus Lanes and then with more to come in the coming months.
Yeah, they all sound promising. I was just wondering at how, how many of them we've done before. So we're, we're really in the beginning stages of, uh, of doing these.
We are in the beginning stages, yes. We have some other bus only lanes that, uh, exist in the city, um, for short segments. The most significant was the, the Mont Figueroa installation that happened, uh, a, a couple of years ago. Uh, but that already has been a victim of its own success and is oversubscribed.
So, yeah, I was going to say, it seems like that one's been pretty successful. Um, what do we do when they're oversubscribed? What's the next step to relieve that?
Uh, we look at expanding to additional parallel streets and, uh, so that's consistent with our recommendation to, uh, look at Olive and Grand Streets. So those are, uh, a few blocks to the east and, um, would serve, uh, additional buses. So Metro would have the opportunity and other transit agencies to, uh, take advantage of those and perhaps, uh, re- from the, the crowded Figueroa Street Bus Lanes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, let me just, uh, thank you, Dan and your staff for, uh, the presentation and for the work. Uh, you have, I think, um, created a very well coordinated, uh, machine. Uh, and I want to commend you for your collaboration and, um, and the speed really with which you're, you're delivering projects. Um, getting these lanes on the ground to support the rollout of Next Gen, uh, later this year is, i- i- is vitally important. You know, before COVID nineteen, a bus was stuck in traffic and that was inequitable and, and that was aggravating. Uh, and, and in the new reality, it will continue to be inequitable and continue to be aggravating. Uh, but now, we've got to be giving transit riders a faster trip so that they're spending less time on an enclosed space on a bus. So this is, that, this is as important as it was before and even more so because now this is the additional matter of health and safety. So, uh, thank you for that. I'll, uh, continue to, uh, keep pushing, uh, Next Gen at Metro as well. Um, we've got a lot to do and this is the, uh, the future of transportation and transit in Los Angeles and I'm glad to see LEDOT being such a good partner. And Mr. Kretz is either asking to be heard again or he's giving my statement jazz hands. I can't tell which one.
Uh, no, I, it, uh, it did make me think of one other additional question, which is, uh, how are we doing on, in our bus system in terms of making, uh, more COVID resistant, more protection for riders and, uh, for drivers? Uh, what steps are we taking, uh, to do that? Other than this, which, which will help by, by shortening the amount of time that people are sitting in traffic on buses.
Yes, for that-
Want me to jump in there, Dan?
Yes, I would appreciate that.
Great. So thank you for the question. I have, uh, there's a few things that we've done. Uh, the first one is that, uh, very early on in the pandemic, we allowed rear door boarding and we blocked off the front of the bus so that the transit operators would have the physical distancing from the riders and we also made fair, we made our, our system fare free, so there would be no reason for, um, somebody to go up to the front of the bus and actually interact with the, the transit operator. The second thing we did was to provide masks, um, on all of the buses for anybody who doesn't have one and made it a requirement for people to have masks on when they're on the buses. The third thing we did was reduce the number of passengers that a transit operator will pick up onto the bus at any given time. So I think it's, uh, ten on a thirty-foot bus and fifteen on a thirty-five foot bus. And then in order to compensate for that, um, uh, decrease in capacity, we added additional vehicles to the lines that we still have operating, where we still have riders so that if you got passed up by a dash bus, there would be one within a reasonable amount of time behind it that could pick you up, um, to try and continue carrying the same number of riders that we were, um, before we had to decrease the capacity. And that's mostly been on the, the Pico Union Line. That remains the line that continues to have, um, significant amount of ridership. So as we reopen the economy and bring people back, um, we think that it's going to be important to have some of the, this transit only infrastructure so that we can move as many people, uh, with perhaps an increased number of vehicles and they don't have to sit in that traffic, um, like other, like, uh, you know, like you, like you would in a general purpose lane. And then we have some, we're going to have to really think about how- And then we have some, we're gonna have to really think about how we bring back service and where we concentrate it so that we can make sure to provide that high level of ridership for the people who really still rely on L.A. DOT Transit to get around, um, are sort of, we did a survey of the number of people who are still, uh, on transit and sort of Metro, and found that about eighty percent of the people still on transit during the pandemic make less than twenty thousand dollars a year. And so, it really is a lifeline service for essential workers that still have to get to their jobs, and we wanna make sure that we do that safely. And then we will continue to work really closely with the collective bargaining units, uh, units and, and labor organizations that represent our transit operators to put rules in place that make sure our operators feel safe because they've become frontline workers, too.
And, and so the, the way we maintain the number of riders, um, not above the, the safe levels, it's just the drivers have to bypass waiting passengers when they have a full bus, uh, under our current numbers. Are, are we running into many situations where people are waiting for a lengthy period of time and are getting multiple bypasses, or are we keeping enough buses in the system to avoid that?
We're keeping a really close eye on that because we like to, um, think of ourselves as really putting our riders first and thanking people for using our service, uh, and by providing them with the best experience that we can. And so that means that, you know, that's why we increased the number of buses on those lines where we were noticing that people might be passed up if we had to decrease the number of people on the buses, so that, um, they wouldn't have that experience of waiting out in the hot sun for a long period of time before getting their ride to work or being late to work. But we're keeping a really close eye on that. The other thing we're keeping a close eye on is other cities and countries that have opened up ahead of us, um, primarily, uh, Tokyo, Japan, um, and a couple of other places that have opened up their transit systems entirely, uh, France as well, um, and have their, their buses and trains back at full capacity. Um, and so far, there have not been, I think there's been one traceable cluster to transit in all of the, the rides that have occurred since reopening. So we're keeping a close eye on the science as well and sort of consulting with, um, you know, and, and learning lessons from other places that have reopened, but being very cautious and thoughtful about not putting anybody in harm's way, and at the same time trying to continue to deliver a really high level of service for people who rely on us.
And just as a thought, if, if we compare ourselves to, uh, other countries and other places, we should also be aware of the fact that, uh, our residents are sort of middle-level good about wearing masks, which clearly seems to be the best, uh, process to, to reduce the spread. And so we have to be careful to compare ourselves to, uh, countries where, where there is pretty universal compliance with masking. I'd say L.A., probably fifty percent, maybe less. So, uh, the likelihood of asymptomatic people, um, being able to spread is greater. So I think we have to be a little more careful and a little slower to, uh, to fully reopen and do it more gradually. But so far, everything I can see, we're doing a, a, a good job to keep, uh, everybody as healthy as possible in the system and encourage us to, to carefully continue that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and, uh, this is a, uh, receiving file report, so, uh, that is what we will do. Thank you. Uh, that brings us next to item number eleven.
Mr. Bonner, before you move on, I'll have to take a roll call vote on the receiving file action.
Mr. Bonner?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Martinez is absent, Mr. Kress.
Aye.
Thank you. Receiving file passes.
Okay, item number eleven.
Item number eleven is an L.A. DOT report relative to next steps and resources needed to develop five- and twenty-year mobility investment plans for transportation capital projects.
Okay, who's, uh, presenting on this one?
Hi, um, hi, council member. It's good afternoon. I'm Rubina Lebrion. Um, I'm a supervising transportation planner, too, uh, with, uh, L.A. DOT's Transportation Planning and Policy. Um, so I'm joined today by Tomas Karanza, who oversees L.A. DOT Planning and Land, Land Review, and, um, and he's available to join me in responding to questions after my verbal report. So I'm here today to discuss the recent accomplishments in delivering the Mobility Investment Program since the November twenty nineteen report and identify next steps and resources, resource needs to develop the five-year and twenty-year mobility investment plans. Uh, just as a reminder, the Mobility Investment Program, or the MIP, is, uh, represents L.A. DOT's efforts to improve advanced planning processes and produce a list of mobility investments that best align with the goals of the Mobility Plan twenty thirty-five and with our department's core values. The Mobility Investment Program has a few components that I'll overview for orientation, orientation purposes, and I will also point out what's new since we last presented. The L.A. DOT, um, project lifecycle, which is in Attachment B of the, the report that was submitted, um, it was developed to define the various stages of the L.A. DOT capital project and, and set expectations for key project delivery activities and procedures. That's from project initiation all the way to project evaluation. And since we last presented on the MIP in November twenty nineteen, L.A. DOT also introduced the Project Development and Planning Guide, which assists project, project managers in the early stages of a plot, of the project lifecycle by providing a roadmap for identifying scope, level of public engagement, and appropriate design documentation needed for a project. L.A. DOT also established the Project Charter Form, which creates a process for documenting project information to foster better coordination and communications. L.A. DOT staff conducted training to introduce the new tools that will improve the project development process. Collectively, L.A. DOT's MIP benchmarks and tools better position the city to leverage funding opportunities to implement transportation investments that enhance the safety, sustainability, and reliability of the transportation system for all users. As initially envisioned, these efforts would result in a five-year and twenty-year plans that are critical for managing new and ongoing funding opportunities. Plans would minimize project funding gaps and result in more equitable outcomes. Development of the five-year and twenty-year plans involves tasks that exceed L.A. DOT's technical and resource capacities. L.A. DOT requested funding for consultant services and hiring authority for a database architect position. The requested funding would create internal technical capacity to build and maintain a MIP project inventory and support integration of MIP activities, including a multi-year budget planning process and improved project delivery. MIP tools and processes will better position L.A. DOT for competitive grant funding opportunities and support decisions to direct resources where they are most critical to achieve the mayor's budget priority outcomes for a sustainable and livable city. Without these resources, L.A. DOT would have challenges in delivering an accessible, centrally-maintained, and standardized project database. Specifically, um, this would present challenges to develop the tools and processes to implement an advanced planning framework that can prioritize projects and close funding gaps in a manner consistent with citywide and departmental priorities. Maintain and share project details with agency partners such as Streets L.A., BOE, L.A. Metro, and more, as well as external stakeholders, in an efficient manner to improve project coordination and delivery. Prepare compelling and data-enriched applications for subregional funding and competitive grant opportunities, and lastly, to retain records on project delivery that can benefit a new, new L.A. DOT staff and the next generation of talent, especially as experienced staff promote, transfer, or retire. A reduction in requested resources will result in a, a partial five-year plan, um, that would only be able to include or capture projects that are in advanced phases of project readiness. L.A. DOT would, would need to defer development of key MIP deliverables. Those would include maintaining the project inventory and scoring platform and preparing a twenty-year plan to track capital-intensive visionary projects and initiatives. Delay or deferment of dedicated long-range transportation capital planning components of the Mobility Investment Program may result in missed opportunities for securing critical transportation infrastructure funding and a setback in delivery of, um, priority projects in the coming decades, thereby potentially minimizing returns on mobility investments. With that, um, thank you, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kress, do you have any questions?
Um, just it, it, it seems cost inefficient for us to not put in the modest resources to, to make this fully productive. Um, are there any other places where we can see where the funding might come from if we're not able to restore it?
Um, not at this time, um, no.
I mean, it, it certainly, if, if we're not able to do it now, it's something we should look at as the, uh, as the year goes on. It seems like, uh, a, a lot of ability to plan and a lot of ability to possibly seek grants and other funding could be, uh, kind of hamstrung by the inability to move it forward. So, uh, I, I'm, I'm distressed to hear it. I think, uh, uh, other than the lack of funding, I think the planning, uh, going forward for this is very positive, but, um, I, I, I'm nervous that we will, uh, make a relatively modest cut and, uh, it will be, uh, very costly to us in the long term.
Uh, and I, I agree with you. I mean, thank you to the staff for the update, 'cause it's phenomenal work and, and the timing just-
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I mean, advanced planning is, is so incredibly important and, you know, it's something the city has not done a great job on, uh, and it's necessary, particularly when we're coordinating between the agencies and positioning the city to be competitive for, for grant opportunities. Um, you know, so the timing of this, with this budget is horrible. Uh, I know my staff is working with DMT to try to find some alternative funding, at least for, for some opportunity and some movement, and I hope that will, uh, will bear fruit 'cause we really need to figure out a way to keep making progress. Um, so, um, yeah, we will, we will receive and file this, um, but, uh, we're, we're gonna keep looking at the implications with you and try to figure out a way to get some of this done. So, um, I recommend we receive and file. Mr. White, do you have a vote?
Yes, sir, let's take a vote. Mr. Bonner?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez is absent, Mr. Kress.
Yeah.
Your actions receiving file passes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's hop to item number twelve.
Item number twelve is an L.A. DOT report relative to the status of the department's Code the Curve project to create a digital inventory of the city's physical curbside assets and regulations.
Good afternoon, Councilmember Bonner and Councilmember Kress and, um, Transportation Committee staff. My name is Karina Masias, uh, supervising transportation planner, one, uh, who overseeing L.A. DOT's advanced planning activities as well as, uh, incoming Code the Curve project lead. Uh, I will be providing an update to you all on L.A. DOT's latest Code the Curve project accomplishments, um, describe our requests for funding in fiscal year twenty twenty-one that would support further development, and touch on how future phases of the project may support our city's recovery and reopening from the COVID-19 public health crisis. Uh, as you know, L.A.'s Code the Curve project aims to build and maintain a digital inventory of the city's physical curbside assets and regulations, as well as develop a curb asset and mobility management system that will allow for more dynamic and resilient stewardship of our network of streets and public rights away. Since our last report in December twenty nineteen, L.A. DOT and our consultants have achieved significant progress. In April, we completed the final Volume One Code the Curve scoping study, which is an assessment of L.A. DOT's current curb asset management practices relative to our policy aspirations to, for managing the curb. Based on findings gleaned from the scoping study, we have drafted the Volume Two Curb Asset Management Plan and Strategic Roadmap. The draft plan outlines how L.A. DOT would establish a qualified digital inventory supported by improved processes and sustainable technologies, and also develop a curb asset and mobility management system. Bridging the gap between that draft plan and execution, the strategic roadmap delineates actions that L.A. DOT and partner entities should take to achieve our envisioned active curb and mobility management. L.A. DOT staff are currently reviewing drafts of those foundational documents for alignment with our city and department's objectives, and also to incorporate lessons learned during our department's response to the COVID-19 emergency. On track with the timing last reported to this committee, we aim to finalize Volume Two by the end of the summer, which sets the table for Phase Two of Code the Curve, involving the design of a curb asset management system that offers an online administrative portal and supports interoperability with other systems. Uh, well before the COVID-19 emergency, L.A. DOT had planned to initiate a task order solicitation to support Phase Two of this ambitious project, uh, and had requested two million dollars in the department's, uh, upcoming fiscal year budget for contractual services that would support numerous system design, digital inventory, and planning activities, as well as early demonstrations of digital active curb and mobility management. Absent that request of funding during the upcoming fiscal year, L.A. DOT will likely not be able to release that solicitation, um, significantly decelerating our progress on this project. Instead, we, we are likely to pursue no-cost or low-cost activities to start our digital inventory work, such as testing different automated data collection methods within very small geographies. Uh, anticipating Phase Two would kick off this summer, L.A. DOT had planned to arrive at Phase Three by late summer or fall of next year. Uh, we must now adjust the project schedule based on new circumstances, uh, to offer a measured approach. Uh, lastly, I wanna take this opportunity to highlight the potential role of L.A. DOT's Code the Curve project in our city's recovery from the COVID-19 emergency and in ensuring the future resiliency of our system of physical assets. Over the last couple of months, working with, um, staff of, from your offices as well as the mayor's office, L.A. DOT has invested staff time and materials to relocate physical curb and street assets to meet urgent community needs, from standing up new purchase pick-up zones to, uh, support local business operations, to looking into expanding the footprint of outdoor dining, markets, and walkways to allow people to practice physical distancing. An active curb and mobility management platform supplied with quality, uh, asset data would reduce the time, effort, and materials to deliver these emergency uses and other uses not yet imagined for our curbsides and streets in the future. Moving forward, we will develop the scope of the forthcoming Phase Two task order solicitation and carry out the Code the Curve palette demonstration concept, uh, to continue our project progress and fulfill critical needs of our physical curbsides during this time. Uh, with that, I'll end my report and also invite Tomas Karanza, uh, project director, to open up to any questions you may have.
Uh, thanks, uh, appreciate it. Um, uh, that was a, a good report, and I thank both you and Tom for the, the, the work on it. Uh, uh, yeah, and, and again, this is a, a, another situation like the last one where , uh, great stuff is happening and just is ready to do even better stuff and, and implement. We, we run into the, this funding, uh, uh, problem. Um, you know, and, you know, as we've noted, the, the way we use our curbs is really changing and, and as we respond and recover from COVID-19, there's lots of different things we need to be doing and, and can be doing. You know, we've temporarily, temporarily restricted parking near, uh, rec destinations to promote social distancing. We've launched programs to support businesses with temporary loading zones for takeout, uh, for restaurant and, and curbside, uh, and, you know, we're launching into, uh, El Fresco, L.A. El Fresco, uh, and so there's a whole bunch of different change going on. And so it's unfortunate that that's, all of this stuff is happening, we could be, uh, availing ourselves of all this at a time when the money's drying up. But, um, I think that, given the nexus to COVID-19, I think there's a lot of sense to, to taking a fresh look at the scope of work for Phase Two, to see if some version of it makes sense for CARES funding. Uh, that'll help us scale up some new programs and evaluate how our curb needs will keep changing during different phases of the recovery. So, um, what I was gonna suggest is in addition to receiving and filing this, that we, uh, direct the CLA to prepare a motion to the Ad Hoc COVID-19 Recovery and Neighborhood Investment Committee regarding the allocation of funding for L.A. DOT's digital curb asset inventory and curb management platform to support COVID-19 business recovery and related activities. And then to direct DOT to report back with a project update again in another, uh, six months, and hopefully that'll give us some assets to move forward on. Uh, Mr. Kress?
I don't really have anything to add. I agree it's a great program and that the timing couldn't be worse that we missed the opportunity to, to fund it, um, and, and certainly support your recommendations. support your recommendations on that.
Great. Okay. So, uh, Mr. Clerk, uh, will we do a, a vote on the direction to receive and file on the subsequent directions to CLA and LADOT that I read? And you're on mute, John. Uh, but Bonner and I, Mr. Corretts?
Uh, Bonner, I. Martinez, absent. Corretts?
Yes.
Aye. Motion passes.
I was gonna do it for you. Uh, okay. That brings us to, uh, item number, uh, 13. We've got this taxi, and then we've got the data protection stuff, and, uh, we've got 16 minutes left. So, um, uh, let's, uh, get, uh, Jarvis up for the taxi item. Oh, I'm sorry. CLA needs to read the item into the record.
Item 13 is a DOT report relative to extending for four months the existing taxi franchise agreements to, set to expire June 30th, 2020.
Jarvis?
Okay. Um, thank you. Uh, this is Jarvis Murray, Policy and Enforcement Administrator for the LADOT, um, main, managing taxicabs. And this item is coming before you, um, a lot like many things that have gone on. Because of the COVID pandemic that has hit us, many things have simply become delayed. And while we are moving the franchise piece forward, we were simply unable to bring, um, one of the biggest items, which are permit fees, to the P Committee, um, for approval and, and a vote. So for this reason, we are simply asking for an extension of the franchise period until, uh, the end of October, uh, which should give us enough time to have the fees reviewed and again placed before the Transportation Committee, um, for potential approval.
Great. Okay. Well, I'm in favor of that. Uh, Mr. Corretts?
Um, I'm in favor of the extension concept. I think, uh, this will be somewhat controversial, and I think a four-month extension, um, is unnecessarily optimistic. Uh, I wouldn't object to this suggest, suggested year, but I suspect that that would not necessarily be unanimously, uh, well-received by council either. So I, I would look for some compromise number that we might, uh, agree can be fully handled during that period. I just don't think four months is, is a reasonably safe period of time.
Uh, wanna do six months?
Uh, I was thinking eight.
Uh, councilmembers, uh, you have the opportunity to, uh, extend it in August if you want. If you, that would, that would give the council a chance to have that conversation. It's just that we need to have this in place by June 30th, and I don't know if there's a lot of time to amend again to make that deadline, because once they expire, the franchises are over. So my recommendation would be you can have that discussion in August as to whether you want to extend it further out at that time, just we want to prevent the, uh, franchises from expiring right now.
I, I think we do need to pass something. If there's, if there's no reason to, uh, not pick a slightly further extended period of time in terms of being legally required, uh, to, to do the four months, I'd suggest that we, we agree on a, a reasonable extension.
Eight months is fine. I'm good with eight months.
Okay. Um, I'm good with it too, so.
All right. So we will, uh, uh, amend the department's recommendation from four months to eight. Um, uh, and, uh, you know, if DOT is ready earlier, then, you know, then we'll move on. Uh, so, uh, will you vote on that, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bonner?
Uh, I'm a yes.
And Ms. Martinez is absent. Mr. Corretts?
Yes.
The report and extension for eight months passes. Thank you.
Thank you much. Um, and then, uh, next is our final item, which is item number four.
Yeah. The committee moves to close session pursuant to Code 54956.9A to confirm this meeting with council relative to an LADOT report relative, or regarding the principles and guidelines for the protection of the use of data from Dr. Scooter and EBI permits as it relates to the pending matter of Sanchez and Michael versus the City of Los Angeles.
Great. So, uh, we've got, uh, 12 minutes for this presentation, and I imagine it would take us half that time just to come in and out of closed session. So, uh, uh, Ms. Reynolds is gonna make her presentation in open session, and we can ask questions in open session, and if we get into anything that, uh, gets into the lawsuit or implications of a lawsuit, then we'll have to go to closed session, but we may lose forum if we do so. So, um, I will, uh, do my best to stay away from, uh, anything that pertains to, uh, legal stuff, and ask you to go ahead with your presentation.
Great. Um, thank you for the opportunity to do this. I will run through this quickly, some high-level points. Um, this council directed the Department of Transportation to take its privacy principles and data protection principles one step further, um, and report out on how we were incorporating them into our work with MDS data. And just a, a quick, uh, reminder of what this data is and why we collect it. We collect information on, from the companies who are operating bikes and scooters in the public right-of-way on the status of their vehicles. The system we have does not consume or ingest any information about the individual riders on those vehicles. We couldn't actually intake it even if companies wanted to send it to us. And that's because we've designed the system to be privacy-centered from the ground up. What we care about are where these vehicles are located, whether or not companies are abiding by our rules as they relate to trip caps and the locations where they're deploying their fleet. And we know that private companies, and tech companies in particular, um, but private companies in general, um, have a motivation sometimes to obscure, aggregate, or otherwise blur their data with respect to information they share with regulators because they have a business reason to do so. And this isn't unique to the tech space. You can look at the Volkswagen Dieselgate scandal and the amount of money that Volkswagen had to pay out as an example of this. So we design the system to protect privacy, but also to, um, make sure that the data we get is data that we can validate and verify. We're using the data to collect fees and enforce rules, and so we need to be able to stand by it. Um, I think it's important also to note that the data we receive is not available to any arm of law enforcement, including Los Angeles Police Department, absent a legal process, and that means a warrant or a subpoena. We have not had any requests for this data from law enforcement, but if we did, they would have to actually come to us with something, uh, more defensible than just a request for the data. And the reason we haven't had any requests for this data is that there is a much richer source of data that actually does include detailed information about individuals, and that's the data that the scooter companies themselves hold. And so if we want to, uh, LADOT cares deeply about privacy. We care about cybersecurity. We want to protect our ability to consume this data by handling it responsibly, by only collecting the bare minimum of what we need to discharge our duties, by keeping it for the minimum amount of time that we need to do that, and then destroying it or aggregating it. Um, and we have, uh, over the last year convened a community advisory board of organizations specifically focused around questions of race and equity as it relates to data, because we take this seriously, and we wanted to work with, um, community-based organizations to get their input on how they would like to see LADOT, um, handle this data in a very responsible way. We've also spent the last probably eight months or so working with, uh, privacy-focused organizations to come up with, uh, a lot of the recommendations that you see before you, um, with respect to data retention and handling. So with that, um, you know, we're, we're asking that you, uh, receive and file this report, um, and we'll continue to do our work on making sure that we are being as transparent as possible about what we're doing with this information so that people can feel confident that the city is using it in a responsible way.
Uh, thank you. You, uh, answered pretty much all of my, all, all but one of my questions, I, I, I think, in your presentation. Just wanna clarify, uh, does LADOT collect trip information or just device status information in real time?
So, oh, in real time? Just device status information?
Okay.
Uh, the trip itself, that's the actual path that a scooter takes or a bike takes in the city, we don't receive until 24 hours after that trip has been taken. And even the device status changes, um, we're looking at how, um, how, what is the, how real is real time? What is the, the data latency that we might be able to tolerate, even for the device status information? Because we, we understand the sensitivity around this issue and around this data, and we want to be very responsive to, um, all of the concerns that we've heard during the pilot.
Thank you. Mr. Corretts?
Uh, I have one quirky question, um.
You?
Which is, which is, we have an unfortunate situation in the Palms area where we have a serial rapist and fondler who seems to be, uh, using scooters for, for the, the quicker of those two activities. Um, do we have the ability, uh, if a complaint is made that, that's really kind of real time to use that to our advantage from, uh, a law enforcement perspective, or is that precluded by our privacy agreements?
That's precluded by our privacy agreements, but each of the scooter companies are required to have a portable, portal available to law enforcement. And so what we would prefer is that if law enforcement wants to get that kind of information, that they go directly to the companies themselves, um, because our data is, um, it, it's, it's just not as, as useful for the kind of, uh, what, the kind of situation you've described, and we don't, we kind of wanna, we don't wanna get into that business. Um, it's the same as, you know, some of the other, um, data that we collect and hold. For example, when we write, uh, parking tickets and we get, you know, sensitive information about folks, um, we want to use that just for parking tickets, and then we want to delete that data as soon as we're done with it so that, um, we can continue to collect it, frankly.
So if, if a scooter company is willing to release that information, uh, law enforcement connecting with them directly would, would be workable?
Would be better because, and it's actually part of our program, and it would be better because the scooter company is going to know who checked out that scooter. It's gonna have information about their name, their credit card information, um, all of that other, all of that other stuff. All we'll have is a little information about where a scooter might have been at a particular time. The scooter companies themselves have a much fuller picture of, um, who's actually using the scooters and where they are. Our data, we really only collect about six pieces of information about the, the vehicles themselves, and it's really just directly related to the regulatory use cases that we have.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions. Uh, I think you've answered all of them.
Excellent. Okay. So thank you for the presentation, uh, and thank you for the, the work you're doing, particularly with community outreach and, and, uh, addressing all the concerns in such a thoughtful manner. Um, so, uh, let's, uh, vote to receive this. Mr. White?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bonner?
Yes.
Martinez is absent. Mr. Corretts?
Aye.
Actions receiving file. The report is complete.
All right. Uh, that clears the desk, does it not?
Yes, it does, sir.
All right. So we are done for the day. Uh, thank you everybody. Again, happy Juneteenth. Um, have a good weekend. We are adjourned.